October the 17th, 2020, School Board Work Session for the Lynchburg City School Board. And we are grateful for everyone being present tonight. We do have an agenda that has been prepared for us. And we would like to adhere to our agenda with the greatest amount of focus. With each item allowing us to complete our work session approximately at 6:00 so that our public hearing can proceed. And then there will be other matters of business that need to take place as well. So I'm asking now for the Board to, in Item B, to approve the agenda. It's their motion to approve the agenda for our work session.
I move to approve the agenda for the work session.
Moved by Ms. Morrison.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion about the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to do something very quickly and ask School Board Member Morrison to make a brief statement about Dr. Spagnoli.
We learned recently that Dr. Spagnoli had passed away. And he served as Lynchburg City School Superintendent from 1973 to 1990. He assumed that position when he was 30 years old. I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Spagnoli when I was a teacher at Glass. He had a long list of accomplishments and he will be greatly missed in the education as well as the community.
Thank you. Let us stand now for our pledge of allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lynchburg City Schools enjoys its proud heritage and all those who have contributed. And we are seeking now to do our part. Item C1, the Office of the Superintendent. Dr. Edwards.
Yes, and we started something new at each work session. One of the departments would just give a brief update of members in that department and what they do. Last month Ethel Reeves gave you an update on the Office of Equity and Community Relations. And now it's my turn to give you an update on my office, which consists of four people: myself, Deputy Superintendent Amy Pugh, who's in the back, Denise Spinner, who is the executive assistant to the superintendent. Ms. Spinner also serves as the foyer officer. So every time there's a foyer request, there is Ms. Spinner that takes the lead on that. And also supporting our office is Ms. Barbara Saunders, who is also here tonight. And her other job is she serves as the Deputy School Board Clerk. So she is here tonight in absence of Tina Day. And our office handles almost everything centrally where it starts. You know Ms. Pugh, pretty much her office does all things instruction and down from there. And mine right now is doing combination of operations and everything else that's going on. Ethel Reeves is also located in our office. And a lot of the communication that you receive comes from her, starts with her, and is formed with our, vetted with us. We have a four-person senior administrative team, which consists of myself, Deputy Superintendent Pugh. It also, we also have the CFO on our team as well as the Director of HR. And from time to time, we will invite other directors to join us. And we meet weekly to do the business of the school division. So that's just short and sweet of my office.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And we have tremendous respect for the quality of the occupants of the Office of the Superintendent. And thank you for informing us and the public in that way. We will now move forward to Item... We'll now move forward to D1, which is our School Board Governance, Norms, and Protocols. And there's some material that will be passed around to you in addition to what has been posted in your board docs. The first piece that you are getting is simply something that can aid you in our development. As many of you know, we've been operating with norms and protocols in the past. This is nothing new. And we had a robust discussion on September the 18th. And as a result of that, there were some updates. And then we, in our October the 17th work session, had further discussion. And so you will see in what is being passed around to you, any of those changes are highlighted in yellow. And so at this time, we are able in a work session to vote on matters that have been appropriately acknowledged. And so we would like you to look at the document and if there is any discussion on what you have at present, I'd like to get clear on that first. And then I do have an additional item that we will also pass around after you've looked at this that can potentially be included with this document. But I just wanted you to get clear on this piece here first. Any thoughts? Dr. Gupta.
The last bullet point on the first page.
Yes?
The, it starts with we'll maintain open communication with each other, but when it comes to descriptive part, it limits to the communication only from the superintendent. So what happens about the Board Chair sharing information with an individual Board member? Should it be shared with everybody else too? You know what I'm saying? So it says we maintain open communication with each other, which is within the Board, but then information from the superintendent. So then it restricts and narrows down only from the superintendent and leaves each one of us out.
So in terms of the horizontal dynamics of this, what is the pledge of the Board? I think it's clear on why we've inserted "from the superintendent." Because we are making it clear that in the culture of our Board, the Chair, the Vice Chair, or no one member of the Board will be knowledgeable of something that the other doesn't know. Dr. Nillis.
I guess I, you know, based on that comment, I'd say if you delete the "from the superintendent" and just say "information shared with one Board member" will be shared with all members. I think that covers...
Which would take us back to where we were.
I was gonna say, I think that's what...
It covers everything.
...was at that meeting.
So I think this was just added in here just to emphasize that the superintendent shares with one Board member, she'll share with everybody. I don't know, well, I don't know. I can go either way on this.
At one point, there was a strong feeling that we did not want it to be that one Board member knew something and the other one did not. Particularly when it is regarding the superintendent, which the superintendent was doing anyway. We just wanted it to be reflected here. Now, Dr. Gupta has put in a good point in the interactions between us. Yes, sir?
And I can give you an example. And Board Member Harvey has been pretty good in that. I asked him questions, when he replied to me, he copied everybody in the Board. You know, those two questions about the data. So when I asked him the Board, when he replied, answered me, he copied everybody in the Board. So that basically following this protocol.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't mind sharing anything with any of you persons that speak. We would just need some language, clear, concise, and coherent language that would help us to accomplish Dr. Gupta's point. Dr. Nillis was offering to excise from the superintendent, and I'm saying that would solve it, but it would then, would we be okay knowing that that means from the superintendent as well?
Yeah. Or you add a bullet that just says the superintendent, information from the superintendent will be shared with all Board members. I mean, if that's a concern. I don't, like I said...
If we didn't have to do all that and just excise from the superintendent, which would leave us where we originally were in the understanding of the Board is that the superintendent communicates everything to everybody. And as we gain information, we CC it and share with everybody. All right? So there's a good possibility that we want to take from the superintendent out. Any further discussion on what you have before you at this time? This takes you through Item 20. We only changed what was said in our meetings. Nothing else has been changed. All right? If there, if, excuse me, thank you. School Board Member Harvey.
Yeah, I just had a question. If I could get a clarification, we have added "or designate" many, many times. So what will be the protocol of Board members knowing who the Board Chair's appointment as designate will be for each of these items?
One way to do it was that I thought that it would be most beneficial for the Chair of the Legislative Advocacy Committee to respond to the media around our most recent event with them. So she did it, and I sent a note out to the Board acknowledging that Bill Evans was gonna do that.
Okay, so that's gonna be our standard protocol, that if you appoint a designate for any purpose, the entire Board will be notified by either email or phone call?
Yes, sir. And Gary, does this, the language we have, is that suitable or do we need to make it more...
Well, I was just, I'm just asking the question just as a understood protocol.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. That's excellent. Dr. Gupta.
Going back, I think the automatic designate would be the Vice Chair, as we talked last time. But in case you feel it's more appropriate for like Ms. Evans to talk about Legislative Committee, you will designate and send everybody. Having said that, number one, step one and two, the word "or" is missing from the parenthesis.
Which one? What you talking about?
Step one and step two, everywhere you have "or designate," but here the word "OR" is missing.
So "OR" needs to be inserted.
"Or designate," or, because everywhere you have "or designate."
Yeah, we had said it.
I don't know, English-wise, it makes sense or not, but...
Yeah. All right? So so far, on the first page, we have removed from the superintendent. On the Item 1, we are going to add "or," where it has been omitted for designate, and it is in every other place where that is so mentioned. Any other discussion relative to what you have in front of you at this time? All right? You still may have further concerns, but now let me bring before you another item. And I'm gonna pass those around on that side. And I'm gonna pass this around on this side. And I would like for School Board Member Nillis to share with us, as it relates to our most recent retreat, there was some discussion around how our standing committees would operate. And so, Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, this is just to capture a little more formally how we, we talked about this at the retreat, how the individual committees to the Board, like the Finances Committee, for example, or the Legislative Advocacy Committee Relations Committee, how those meetings are run and what the role of the committee chair is in terms of setting the agenda, communicating the information, summarizing the findings, and presenting them to the Board during our next public Board meeting. So it's just like, well, we'll just add this to the Board norms and protocols, and it gets reviewed every... And it gets reviewed every year. And if we feel we need to make a change, then we can make a change. So it's a way to capture what we talked about and kind of the Board's norms and protocols are, I think, I mean, they're for us. So this would be added to this package.
This would be item 21, Developing and Executing Board Standing Committee Meetings. Actually, one of the different wording. And then on the right side would be this information below. Dr. Gupta?
My only concern is, like, the Finance Chair, once he starts soliciting feedback, input, information, I hope it doesn't go into, you know, he's spending all his time collecting that information. We end up into weeks of back and forth. And we reach the committee meeting time and not enough time is out there for the agenda to be out for the public to see. So there should be a deadline where feedback stops, you understand? Otherwise, it will become a working nightmare for the Committee Chair. It will become a full-time job.
Ms. Morrison?
Well, I really am in support of adding this because I think it outlines what we said on Saturday that we want to happen during meetings, that they're committee meetings, that they're productive, and that there's a beginning and an end. And I do think that will be, as you seek information, the Committee Chairs can say, just like Dr. Coleman did, "I'd like this information by Monday evening." And that's the cutoff. And that would be something that the Committee Chair would establish.
Thank you, School Board Member Morrison. Dr. Gupta, good point. So thank you, Dr. Edwards. Thank you, Dr. Nillis, for the language. Do we need to speak to Dr. Gupta's point more specifically about the Monday before, the week before the meeting? As we have outlined...
You're the Chair, you okay? You two are the key Committee Chairs.
Or just leave it like it is, as Ms. Morrison has stated, and it would be clear that the Board, respective Board Chairs would handle that? Yes?
The two key Committee Chairs are here, Finance and Legislative, right? Those are...
Correct.
I think for me, this is fine. I think we're very different beast than Finance. And I think I would let you take what you're comfortable with, and I'm okay with... I think our Committee is just very different. It's not as detailed, so that wouldn't happen. So I think you've gotta be good with this.
I'm comfortable with this because I think this is pretty much in line with what we talked about on Saturday.
All right, very good, very good. So if it would be in order, if we would consider this in total, as a total document, recognizing on the first page, everything will read as you see it, other than "from the Superintendent," as being excised, as we're striking that. So that would not be there. On item one of the protocols, we're adding the word "or" in that box where it is not joined with "designee." Everything else in the document remains the same. And we are now adding item 21 to our protocols as you have received it. Any further thoughts on it, Mr. Harvey?
I just asked that maybe it's a note that's at the bottom, under the violations, but a note about the assignments of the designee will be notified to the Board by the Board Chair. So just so we all know, who's the designee for all of these things that you could have a designee?
I say that again, what did you just say?
I just made the note, "All assignments of designee will be notified by the Board Chair to the Board." And you might want to rephrase that.
We need to know what it's saying right now if we're gonna add that. We need to know exactly what it is. All this, what did you say?
I said, "All assignments of designee will be notified by the Board Chair to the Board." And I would add "and Superintendent." So anytime you make a designee for whatever, we're just, so we just know.
So all assignments of the designee will be notified by the Board Chair and Superintendent. Dr. Nillis?
I think that's covered under the open communication. I mean, this is, I think these are like how we agree to work together. If there's an issue, then we need to talk about it. You know, if designees are being assigned and communication is not being made, or Committee Chairs are being overloaded with requests, I think certainly in the purview of the Committee Chair to say, "Nope, we're full for this meeting." You know, "We'll add it to the next one," or that kind of thing, so...
Which item, which item are you referring to?
Well, the addition...
Oh, I know, but you said it's somewhere else in the document?
No, no, I'm just saying, I mean, we hear each opinion ultimately out as one. "We'll maintain open communication with each other."
I understand.
I think that covers...
Mr. Harvey, apparently, it's already implied in the last bullet on the first page.
Okay, I just, again, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I've had instances where I am contacted by another Board Member as if he is, he at that point is your designee, but I didn't know that, so I'm trying to figure out, who am I supposed to be taking information from?
Any other, any member of the Board think that we need to just add the language for clarity, or do we feel comfortable with letting the last bullet on the first page?
I think we...
Yes, Ms. Morrison?
I think we said that you were gonna notify the Board Members of any designee.
True.
But it doesn't state that.
I don't think it hurts to just write it on there.
All right, and you are suggesting that to be, appear aware, Mr. Harvey?
I was just saying, you've got some closing notes that are not within the matrix. And it could say, "All assignments of designee will be notified by the Board Chair to the Board and Superintendent."
Just wanted us to be consistent with what we have. Everyone okay with that, or should we put that within something in the bottom?
One question about that. So occasionally it's come up where you've asked, you know, you're gonna contact the Board, I'm gonna contact the Board. I call and say, "James has asked me to call you." Is that adequate, or do we need, does James have to send an email out saying that, you know, someone else will be contacting in that case?
Good point.
Well, I guess that's exactly the circumstance that I would say. You know, if that point, is Dr. Brennan as the Vice Chair, or is he acting as the Chair? As your designee?
My comment to you, you know, what I call in that, was I say that Dr. Coleman has asked me to call you. You know, we divvied up for whatever reason, he's unavailable. So I always use that statement, or the, you know, the person would do that, that I've been asked by the Board Chair to do this. Does that need clarification from an email also, or...
No.
I'm not exactly sure that I would have any opposition to that.
Ms. Morrison?
I think that's part of what the Chair and Board Vice Chair do, is that there are times when they have to contact us pretty quickly. And we would take, we would divide it up, and he would say, "You take that side, and I'll take this side." But I think we always started it with, I've been asked by, and James is Susan, to call you because we're getting this, or, and I think that statement is more than enough. I think that we, I can trust if you call me.
Point heard, Mr. Harvey. Dr. Senha?
I would suggest that we place that statement as a bullet three, right after the Chair or designee. That's the first time we mention Chair or designee. And then you could just say, if you want to make it explicit, that you will specify who's your designee. Or you could take it on faith that when somebody says, "I'm calling, James asked me to call you,"
Okay.
That you're acting as a designee of the Chair and not of your own to get opinions.
Gotcha. All right, and you were suggesting that that would come where?
As a third bullet on the very first page.
As a third bullet on the very first page. So after the Chair or designee, but before, we will be mindful. Yeah, I kind of would like it there rather than to be kind of out there at the back.
I would agree with that.
All right, so we are seeking the will of the Board. I tried to rush it, and we've had ample time. We paused on this. And so we do want this to become the culture for the Board. So is there a motion for the acceptance of the Board norms and protocols as we've stated, now adding a third bullet pertaining to the statement, "All assignments of the designee will be notified by the Board Chair and Superintendent," taking from the Superintendent off of the last bullet of Designee on one, and adding item 21, Developing, Executing Board Standing Committee Meetings. Are they clear on that?
Yes, I move that we approve the governance.
Mr. Harvey?
I just wanted to be specific, the wording of that. "All assignments of designee will be notified by the Board Chair to the Board and the Superintendent."
To the, to the Board, by the Board Chair, to the Board?
And the Superintendent.
And the Superintendent. Thank you, sir. All right, did I hear a motion from Dr. Carter?
Yes.
There's a second by Mr. Harvey. Any further questions, discussion?
Just to clarify this, so that means that if there's a situation where the Vice Chair is asked by the Board Chair to contact, or to hit, to send an email to say that he's done that? Is that what we're saying?
He could, or I personally would accept if you say, "I'm calling on behalf, you know, Dr. Coleman has tagged me as his designee to contact you regarding this," whatever. It's just a clarification as to what's coming. Is it coming from the Board Chair? Because we list so many times the designee? Or is it coming from just a Board Member? You know, from your role as a Board Member?
That would be notified by email that there's a designee? Is that the statement, or is it not worded that way?
I didn't...
It doesn't say email.
By email.
Yeah. All right.
So just to clarify, so it is acceptable, and it doesn't have to be, it can be someone calling, it can be Sharon calling, because James has asked her to call, and she can say, "I'm calling because James, the Chair has asked me to do that." That that's acceptable?
I would think so.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you for that point of clarification to the question. So here are no other questions. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we have our norms and protocols, and we will work diligently now to make that a part of our culture, and we'll refer to that moving forward. All right, we're doing well with time, just one minute beyond when I hoped we would start E, return to learn. And I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Edwards.
And I'm gonna quickly turn that over to Ms. Pugh to give the academic side update.
Good evening, Board Members. I have a few quick updates and reminders for our LCS community. And then we have two elementary principals here to share their school stories. I just want to remind the community that yesterday was the last day for families to complete the form requesting a change in their child's learning model from remote-only to habit instruction for the second semester. Schools are now making plans to bring as many of these students as possible back for in-person learning. We have to consider many factors, which we touched on last, at the last meeting, including cohort size, classroom space, keeping in mind again that we're following the CDC guidelines for social distancing and transportation. Our goal is to let families know if their child has a spot for in-person learning for second semester, no later than January 11th, 2021. Last Friday, Governor Northam issued some additional mandates in regards to face coverings and gatherings. Children five and older must wear appropriate face coverings. And public and private gatherings are now limited to 25 people, down from 250. And we just want to reassure our community and our families that LCS has already had practices in place regarding both of these. Our policy, which was adopted on October the 6th, 2020 by the School Board, states that all pre-K through 12th grade students and all LCS staff members must wear face coverings or masks. Our classrooms and other school spaces have already been limited to the number of students and staff in one area at a time. Please be assured that we will continue to closely monitor all of our practices to ensure that we are following all of the recommended guidelines currently and in the future. I also want to remind our families that as we enter the cold and flu season, please, if your child has symptoms, and they're not feeling well, please keep them home from school. And let the teacher or the school office know that your child will be absent from learning for the day. So we appreciate all that our families are doing to support us, all that the community is doing to support us. And I just wanted to give them some of those updates for the things that we are doing. And I am excited at this time. We have two principals with us, Ty Gafford, Principal of Elementary, Perrymont Elementary School, and Monica Hendricks, who's the principal of William Marvin Bass Elementary School. And they are here tonight to share some of the great learning experiences that are happening within their school community. So I'm gonna let Ty come up while I get the presentation on the screen.
We certainly, this is Mr. Gafford's first time sharing with the Board. Let's give him, that's what Mr. Hendricks is so thankful for, your leadership.
Amen. All right, thank you again. Thank you for this privilege to do this this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. And so if I have to stop and unfog my glasses, please forgive me. I'm still navigating the mask and glass kind of thing, so... So we will get started. Perrymont this year, it's been a pleasure. There we go, okay. So...
That one, yes, sir.
Okay, so, you know, it started to look and sound like school when our kids came back. I would be very honest to tell you that obviously, school is just a building without the kids in it. And so we're very fortunate with the opportunity to return to school. And so the last few weeks is definitely, we've had our house decorated a lot more. It's been a lot of great things in our hallways. The walls have started to look a lot like school, and it's sounding like school. I'm actually right beside a classroom, a kindergarten classroom, and I hear the singing that goes on in the afternoon. So I'm learning all the words to the songs that they're singing. So they don't know it yet. This is our hallway, obviously, just, you know, throughout our building. Like I said, it's been, it's been great. So when we decided that, obviously, we decided that we were gonna come back. I'm a history teacher by trade, if you know if you knew that or not. But, you know, I challenged our staff. This is a picture of Hannibal. I don't know if you're familiar with the story of Hannibal. Hannibal crossed the Alps to attack the Roman Empire. And at one point, as legend or story goes, Hannibal was told as the, as his army was about to cross into Italy and attack the Romans, that they couldn't find a way across the Alps. And Hannibal's reply was, "We're either gonna find a way, or we're gonna make one." And so that's been the task of our teachers for our kids, is either finding a way or making one for them. And we have wanted school to be as normal as possible. So the guy on the left, I don't know him, but this was book character day. Somehow, my wife convinced me, my wife, Kim, convinced me that Charlie Brown was a good idea, so... And Ms. Ericott on the right, she carried around a locket in her pocket all day long, so... And of course, there are some of our faculty as well. Kids got a great kick out of that. I was, it's funny, obviously, we all date ourselves with the little kids. I was Pikachu. I was not Charlie Brown. It's all relative, right? They kept going, "Pikachu, Pikachu." I'm like, "No, Charlie Brown." And they're our little darlings, just the sweetest. They had a great time. This coincided with our fall field day. One of our teachers, Hannah Walker, who's in kindergarten, Hannah and Marissa Freeman, our Health and Movement teacher, decided that because we couldn't go to the pumpkin patch like we normally do, right, that they were gonna bring the pumpkin patch to our kids. So this coincided with our, with our book character days. And they were able to go outside and paint pumpkins and socially distance, play games. And it was just great to hear them laughing and giggling. And I got to hold a lot of pumpkins that still were wet with paint as they got in their cars that afternoon. So I told Hannah, "I really appreciate that." But doesn't look like Spider-Man. I don't know exactly what Spider-Man was doing here. He was not, I don't know if he was happy or not, I couldn't tell. But that's just some of the pictures of our fall festival. So again, just the opportunity. Coming up, we have Turkey Trot. This actually has been going on. I am in training for this right now personally because the kids have been asking me if I'm gonna do it. So this is the course. So the kids actually run around, this is our cafeteria area, cafeteria, whatever. And so the kids actually have to run around. It's time, they walk or run. Ms. Freeman, again, on top of things. She turns the lights out, and there's disco ball and all kinds... there's disco ball and all kinds of stuff going on, and the kids, you know, run around and they get time for it and there's prizes for it, and there are some of our winners, of course, winner, winner, turkey dinner there, so. Again, our goal was to support our kids as socially and emotionally as we could, because we knew that coming back to the building, that a lot of them had not had that. You know, and to be honest, we, at this age, school was still meant to be very fun, and we wanted to bring some of that joy back to them, so. Our teachers have been tremendous in doing this, I can't speak enough about them and our school and all that they've done for our kids and returning back to the building. I promise you, there is learning going on every day, it's not just party time at Perrymont, but we know that, we know that, we knew that this was a big part of it as well, so. And you know, and the last thing is, I'd like to say to not only you guys, obviously as a board, but also just to all of us collectively in Spurk City, we, we're all in this together right now. I think I've heard a number of you say that to our parents that are out there, how can you help? You know, if you're a remote parent, having your kids check in, you know, complete their assignments, check in daily, if you can't check in, call in the school, letting us know if there's anything that you need, you know, we're here for you. Obviously, as hybrid students, we're, we're excited that those parents have trusted us to, to allow their kids to come to school every day. And I'm just a big believer in communication, you know, nothing gets done without great communication, and so like I said earlier, to our parents that are out there, to our communities, if there's something that you don't have, your kids don't have, reach out to us and let us know, and we will try our darndest to get it for you, so. Thank you for your time, thank you for allowing me to share our story at Perrymont, and from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure I speak for my faculty and staff, we appreciate all you do for us every day. Thank you.
Wonderful.
So you all didn't clap for me, you clapped.
That's right, Miss Hendricks, you know we clapping for you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Monica Hendricks, the proud Principal of William Marvin Bass Elementary School. And we were tasked with sharing a story with you all, I am not a storyteller at all. So when I thought about what should I share, business as usual popped in my head because it has been business as usual at Bass Elementary School. So I wanted to share with you all sort of our journey from the beginning to the current, because I think it's just very important to highlight all, all of the planning and preparation that my team has just poured into ensuring that we had everything ready for our students when they returned. So one of the first things that I did is that I created a Bass Task Force, which began in July. So summertime, no one's under contract, and I had varied groups from teachers, instructional assistants, attendants, the nurse, that volunteered their time to plan out what would school look like for our students when they return, in the remote world or hybrid. So you all can see our four subgroups, we focused on instruction, social, emotional, learning, logistics, and that's pretty much anything you can think about in the school of how do they transition in the hallways, just how does lunch look, and then parental engagement. The second key point, I think, with us, which has helped in our success, is just our communication with all stakeholders. I was very honest and upfront with my staff, if I didn't know something, I would just say, I didn't know, I don't, did not want to miscommunicate. So over-communicating information that they needed to know in multiple formats, and also just our communication with our parents and our community. The teachers created videos, we had phone calls, we had yard visits, we have done everything that you possibly could think of to ensure that we have that ongoing communication and collaboration with our parents. And the last thing I would say is just the collaboration amongst the individuals within, within the school year. I had only two new teachers this year, and they sort of came in, this is their new normal, they don't know what it's supposed to look like, and they have been able to help the veteran teachers, it's been everyone just sharing ideas and coming up with what is working for your students or for this child. So the collaboration amongst the colleagues has been great to see. I had to highlight the front office, because they were, I feel like they're the front line, and the attendance, security person calling parents constantly about attendance, what can we do, checking in, she's on the left, and then the secretary was fielding so many questions during the summertime that she just had to be well-versed in everything, so that goes back into my communication, ensuring that the individuals on the front line have the correct message to send out to the community. One of the things that came up in just having conversations, because we contacted all of our parents before the school year started, just to kind of gauge what they were thinking, what they needed, is once we started in the remote learning environment, a lot of our students and families were expressing they didn't have the supplies that they needed to do their assignments. So we hosted a student supply drive to bridge that gap. And then the rest of the presentation just shows some, some of our procedures that we have in place. So we have our morning arrival procedure, so things look a little differently now, the kids, I mean, it took them probably a week to get accustomed to routine and they just kind of roll with it, they're amazing, the kids, it's, they just roll with the flow and they, they're really doing a great job. But you all can see temperature checks every morning, transitions in the hallway, I mean, just, I didn't even think about when kids line up in the hallway, I mean, not the hallway, in the classroom, they also have to have that distance, so just making sure that we have that, so they're just transitioning out of the classroom on the left. But just things like that, we just had to make sure we had all of those logistical things in place. And then we get to instruction, so recently, some of the teachers have been struggling, we do a lot of small groups and a lot of partner work, so they would come to me, are we still allowed to do that, and I'm like, of course, we just have to make sure we still have the distance in place. So you'll see a few pictures of the independent work and then the partner work, so they still are able to work in partners, you just have to think through that process a little bit differently. Also, one of my teachers felt it was very important for us to get outside as much as we could. So she actually had seventy-five to eighty camping chairs donated to our students. So we have learning, we extend learning outside every day, well, not today, it's freezing outside, but on most days where they have learning outside, they'll go outside and do their reading or their working on science, so they're outside all the time as much as they can. And then I had to highlight the instructional assistants, our support staff is, they have always been amazing, but they have really stepped it up. So this is one of the instructional assistants, she's sitting there with her two Chromebooks and she's having a Zoom meeting with the student, and that's what they do. They're available at any time to assist a parent, assist students, all day long. Cafeteria has done a wonderful job, it was great seeing them back in the building, because they were displaced at one point, but now they're back in the building, and our cafeteria staff, we have breakfast and lunch in the classroom, so they deliver that to the students each and every day, and then they provide the weekend food bags. And you all know, social, emotional has come up throughout, so we are trying to utilize our time as effectively as possible, so our school counselor, you can see on the interactive TV to the left, she's doing a social, emotional lesson during lunchtime, so kids can have lunch and get their social, emotional learning. And then another day, she extended it outside in the back of Bass Elementary, so they had social, emotional outside. And then recess, I had to highlight the, the few fun times where they get to take off their mask outside and breathe a little bit. And then our cleaning procedures, our custodial team, you all can see, that's the, the spray on the left is what they use to sanitize the cleaning equipment, and they also have been just wonderful. And then resource classes, this is our music teacher, they're getting some movement in within the classroom. Librarian has his library on wheels, so being creative with that, so the students can still access resource classes. And then this is just a little bit of some of the fun activities that we are still trying to incorporate within the school day. So we have the Unity Day on the right, and then second grade had some sort of mystery, I don't, it's called, oh, Fear Factor, just Fear Factor activity. And I feel that all of us in Lynch Park City schools believe this, we will do whatever we can for the students, every student, every day, whatever it takes, and that is our theme at Bass Elementary, so I had to highlight that at the end. But parents, my message would be just to continue to hang in there, I know it's challenging at times, and like Mr. Gafford said, we are here to support you in any way that we can, just reach out to us, we'll do whatever we can. That's it, thank you all.
Yeah, yeah, thank both of you, we really.
Thank you so much, Monica and Ty, and at this time, we will take questions if you have any of me or of principals.
Tonight was more informational, but if there is a burning question from a Board member, we certainly would entertain it, and then Dr. Senha will give us her portion. Dr. Gupta?
So we are in Phase Three right now. Are you, I'm assuming you are in plans for Phase Two in case it happens and when it happens. So would you be able to share with Board sometime in, in next meeting or so, where do we stand in terms of planning for Phase Four?
Yes, sir.
Are you planning for Phase Four, are you in the process of?
We are still in planning for Phase Three and getting more students in, but we are always planning for Phase Four, but we will be able to share some information with you at the next Board meeting.
Thank you, anyone else? Ms. Evans?
I do have a question, and it's really not, thank you for y'all's presentations, it's not really elementary question, but it's still a Return to Learn question, is that all right?
Go right ahead.
We, Susan received an email today, and so did I, so I want to clarify or figure out, it was about sports, or, yeah, it was all sports, I think. Middle school, and having no activity bus, which is greatly limiting, who can do and stay after school for sports? And I feel like that is an area we have got to look at, we can't, if we take that bus away, we're taking a student's ability to be able to do their sport, which is, I feel like we've kind of been fighting and pushing to keep kids engaged and keep kids in it, and if we're taking that away and your parent happens not to be able to, be able to pick you up, or grandma, or somebody, I, I just think we really, really need to look at that. If, if we don't have any possible means of transportation for some kids, we're completely taking that avenue off the table for them, and I very much worry about that.
So, so noted, between Amy and Dr. Edwards, brief response or follow up on it later?
We will follow up on that and have that conversation, we'll have conversations with the middle school principals and get Transportation Department involved and, and do what we can to support that, but we will take that back.
Thank, thank you for bringing that forward, Ms. Evans, so once again, to both of you, I'll thank you all so much for your presentations and just doing some incredible work for our kids, and since Belle brought up about sports, I do just want to acknowledge that prior to coming, Ty was providing leadership for the Virginia High School League, so certainly he's sensitive to all of those things, and so we're appreciative of you. Give them one more hand if they leave out. All right, Dr. Senha, would you like to share anything with us?
Well, just want to be mindful of the time, but our test positivity rate is up, so that's of concern. But our cases per week have dropped significantly from the high of one-seventy-three they were at two weeks ago, leveling off to about a hundred cases per week. Hospitalizations are down from what they have been in prior two-week periods, so that's an encouraging sign. Otherwise, you know, we're just bracing ourselves for what everybody fears will be a very dark winter. I'm hoping people will make wise choices over Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays to help us, again, keep the spread of the virus to a minimum in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Senha, and I'm hearing about free Zoom opportunities for people, and so hopefully it'll all work out. Thank you for that information, and I hope the community appreciates our continued efforts to keep you updated as to the activity of our schools. All right, this now brings us to E-two, which is Memorandum of Understanding, and it is linked to our goal in relationship to family and community engagement. I do want to share with the Board that the Memorandum of Understanding is not a policy, it's not a regulation, it's a memorandum, and it is under the purview and auspices of our Superintendent. And so in light of what you've received in the past, she's now going to share something that could kind of help us to appreciate the direction that is coming from her office and data and staff, and then we can give some input. Dr. Edwards?
Certainly, and I'm going to be mindful of time too, so first, let me say thank you to everyone who has provided feedback over the last couple, couple of weeks, a couple of things that we've done, we, we had the Chief and Officer Ramirez join us at a prior Board meeting to give some information about SROs. We had a wonderful conversations in the community where Director Brown joined us as well, which was hosted on YouTube. After that, we posted our MOU on our website for community members to give us feedback, and I have all of that feedback as well from our community members. We also received feedback from our administrators and our students, parents, of course, were included in the community feedback. And then also, just of note, there was a Superintendent's memo, and a very important change that happened over the summer regarding the reporting that, for principals, and they have removed the requirement to report acts that may constitute a misdemeanor offense, and I think that's really huge for our community to understand that principals no longer have to report any acts that may constitute a misdemeanor. This was passed in July, 2020, we got notice in October, so that information as well was taken into consideration as we did it. And our goal was to take our existing MOU, which the public has a copy of, it's included in our, our website. We also used the model MOU from Department, Virginia Department of Education, and if you looked at the model, you'll see there's some overlap and a lot of the things that we already had in our existing MOU. So our goal was to merge some documents, take some feedback, and come up with a revised, updated, and enhanced MOU that later in December, both the Chief and I would review, agree upon, and sign, and we have to do this process at a minimum every two years, the last time we did this was in 2018, December, 2018. So we have done some of that work, I do want to share, and for the benefit of just folks listening and the Board, and then I'll get some more feedback from the Board as well, there are a couple of things that I want to point out. One, I think it's important to understand the goals of our MOU and our SRO program are to promote positive and supportive school climates. It's not to have police in school, it really is to have that supportive climate, and also we want to have a safe and healthy school climate for our kids. I made a joke with the Chief that says, you know, in the public, you're considered first responders, but in our schools, our principals are considered first responders. And I want to emphasize that point, that when it comes to anything children, anything that starts out disciplinary, it starts with our building administrators and our staff. SROs are not the people we call for classroom management, they're not the people that we call to handle discipline, that is our staff, our principals, our teachers, and our whole community, along with the support of Director Brown, who is also here to, to assist with this conversation. And I think that's important, because when I looked at the feedback, that was one of the questions that came up quite often, so I do want to make sure I make that point. But it's also important that that's in our, in our MOU, so while it's repetitive, you'll see several times in our MOU, the role of the SRO is not to do discipline, and the role of the building administrator is to respond to discipline in all things child. I think Director Brown would like to say that we always try to take a preventative approach to any kind of discipline, we try to take an intervention approach, not a punitive approach, that is usually the absolute last resort that we have, and again, we want to express that in, in our MOU. So part of what you will see in here is, what kind of training do SROs need to work with our young adults? A lot of the training is very similar to what we as educators work with, understanding the child development, the adolescent, the young child, understanding students with disabilities and their manifestations, understanding conflict resolution, and just that general way that we have of work. Understanding conflict resolution and just that general way that we have of working with young people. They're young people, they make mistakes, they make bad choices. And how do we deal, how do we deal with them and respond to them and how do we get them to be reflective? And we'd like our SROs to be in partnership with us with that. They are very helpful with us in terms of responding, especially during this time of COVID, with threat assessments and any safety issue that we might not know what's going on in, in the schools necessarily. But working in conjunction with our, our partners, we can get to a child and provide any intervention that we need. So they do sit on our threat assessment teams. They do help us with those, those analyses that we have to do. They sit on our, our school safety teams and assist us with general safety issues as well. And again, going back to the role, because there were a lot of questions about questioning and, and investigations and searches and all of those things. And I will start one more time and say that starts with our building administrators. SROs do not just randomly stop and search a kid. They do not question, their work is done in consultation with our building administrators unless it's imminent danger. Obviously, if it's imminent danger, you want our SRO or law enforcement to respond. But their work is based on probable cause, criminal things. Our work is based on reasonable suspicion and just general care about kids. Those are very different things, which is why our building administrators are the first responders. And again, making sure that we capture that in our MOU. So once you see the, the merged version of it, you will notice that we've put a lot of that information in our MOU. And finally, I just want to reiterate that we are in a time where we see, it's very visual in the media, some of the very negative policing that's going on in our community. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that and to say that there is no place for that in our schools. Our school administrators don't support to that, our SROs don't support to that. The partnership that we have with the Police Department, we do not do that. So part of what we also want to do in our MOU is make sure that if we say that, that we evaluate ourselves and make sure that we are not doing those things. We are not doing racial profiling, we are not treating kids disproportionately different due to race or color or economic status or zip code. That we're not doing some of the things that we see portrayed in the media by some of the officers who are, who just are frankly not good officers. That, there is no place for that in our schools. And in partnership, we want to make sure that those things don't happen. And we want our community to feel safe enough to tell us and, and contact us if there's anything that is going on. And again, that's why the first responders in our schools are our building people, our principals and our, our staff and our teachers. So I just really, really wanted to emphasize that point. What you will see next, so the Board on Saturday got kind of a merged version of the model MOU, our existing MOU. We received comments and feedback from, and some good stuff too, from students and from faculty, from staff, from community members. And we tried to take the best of all of that and put that together in our draft MOU, which we'll be typing up after this, this meeting tonight. Because I just wanted to make sure if there was any additional feedback or any additional considerations that we need to have. I do have Director Brown here because one of her jobs is really training. She is in charge of student services and making sure that all of our students' social, emotional health and safety needs are met. And I just want to give her an opportunity because she does a great job every year of getting us together and making sure that we do both collaborative SROs and administrative training together, but also some separate works. I just want to give you a couple of seconds to talk about some of the stuff that you did.
Yes. Every year, we provide training with a lawyer to discuss civil rights and to review scenarios that have occurred throughout the school year to make sure that we are separating the duties of the school administrator versus the SRO officer. Also during that training, we talk about the, talk about relationships and talk about the importance of building relationships with the students, not only on campus, but also off campus. Perception is our reality when we're working with our students. So maintaining positive relationships within the school community and outside is crucial in ensuring the safety of a school campus. Additional training that we work collaboratively with the Police Department with is trauma-informed training. Making sure that our SROs work hand in hand with our school officials as we're working with kids that might have been traumatized. Are going through some social, emotional things within the community, are homeless. And making sure that we provide SRO officers with resources to help our students that might be in need, whether it's during school time or off-school time. Also, we talk about the things that we need to address. What are our glows and what are our grows from the previous year? And also looking at our discipline crime data, talking about student referrals. How can our SROs help us with deter criminal activity, whether it's in school or outside of school? Helping us build crucial conversations that our counseling staff may need to have in terms of focus groups with our students. And just incorporating those SRO officers in our day-to-day activities in a positive way and not just in an enforcement or criminologies, a criminal way with interacting with our students. So our main focus in the trainings have been to focus on implicit bias trainings, crisis intervention training, de-escalation. And I reemphasize, civil rights. Helping them to understand that our students do have rights, we respect our students' rights. But also helping our students understand their rights and why they should know them as well.
So we have five SROs that are in our, our secondary schools. We have Officer Ramirez in EC Glass, Officer Thompson at Heritage, Officer Takkis at Dunbar, Officer Hall at Sandusky and Officer Sacks at Lincoln Middle School. But those five officers also spend a lot of time in our elementary schools as well and have great relationships with our elementary school principals. They, I'm surprised you didn't see them in Character Day over there. They do show up and they read to kids, they get involved in the activities and just try to be positive role model for children. I would also be remiss right now if I didn't give a shout out to the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Sloan.
Thank you.
Who also spent a considerable amount of time in our schools and helping our children, partnering with us when we were giving away bikes and every, they just show up, they're there, they're very present. They're very loved by our staff and students. And although this MOU is not about them, they are equal partners in what we do and we're happy to work with them. And my last comment before, which will actually transition us nicely to the next meeting, is there's been a lot of conversation about whether or not we need to get rid of SROs. And the feedback that I received from many of you was very positive about the relationship that our students and our staff have with SROs. There's always room for improvement, for all of us to do better at our jobs. But I think we have a math problem. And the math problem comes from us saying that we need social workers, we need more mental health professionals, more psychologists, more counselors. And the answer to that is yes. And I would no more sit here and say, let's build a house and let's choose whether or not we want a bathroom or a bedroom. My answer is we want both. So my message is we value our SROs and their role in our schools. And we also know, we want, we need additional counselors. We need additional support personnel. This is not an either/or, but rather an and. And I'm going to say to this entire public, our children deserve the and, they deserve both. So let's have that conversation about giving our kids everything that they need rather than substituting or swapping out something for them because their education is based on an and, not an or.
All right, before we start any responses, Dr. Edwards and Director Brown, thank you for what you shared with us tonight. I, I do want to remind the Board that we are into public hearing time, but I do want to just reiterate, we're not voting. We have the opportunity to share tonight, but you can put any of your thoughts into email and forward those to Dr. Edwards or have personal conversations with her about it as she is preparing for the memorandum signing in December. Ms. Evans?
I just had one quick question, you know, I, I do realize the great things that SROs do. But I also can't ignore that there are some complaints and people who don't feel good about it. So my question would be, what have we done or what can we do to bridge that and bring the people who don't feel good about it to a public point where we can have that conversation with the police and the people who are not comfortable with it and let's try to fix that? Without doing that, nothing's going to change. It's like we're just ignoring that, yes, some people are saying, hey, I have a problem with it. I think we need to try to at least acknowledge that and hear the problems and see if we can work through them together.
And you, you bring up such an excellent point because we have been there. And I think one of the things that we don't talk about is exactly that, what happens when it's not a good fit. And we've had that, we've had that since I've been here and we've had to go to the table and have those hard conversations. And again, you know, the, the locus of control, what we want for our students is really in our hands. And we've requested a change, just to get a more kid-friendly, a more kid-inclusive officer. It's the same as teachers, you want that great fit. You want someone who gets kids, right? That's the first requirement, you have to really understand children. So when we do have those concerns and they're brought to our attention, we have those meetings with the Chief and the Sergeant Smith, Sergeant Fink in the past, to sit down and talk about our concerns. Because these are, you know, when they're in our building, there are family members in our building.
And I, I really was thinking more about the community members being able to voice those concerns to those people. Like a, a community forum.
Well, School Board Member Evans, you right on it, this is a part of family and community engagement.
Right.
And the chairship of the committee. Let's talk about some things going forward in the future around that. Thank you for bringing that up. Also, anyone who has submitted an email or anything to any board member or whatever, our board members are already circulating that and sharing it with the superintendent as well. Dr. Carter?
And I have concerns regarding even some of the model language, especially on page nine when it talks about, it's almost stating that the SRO, SROs have authority to stop, question, interview and take law enforcement action without prior authorization of the school administrator or contacting parents. And it doesn't necessarily, in the sentence prior to that, it says about criminal activity and then it takes this big stance. And so I think even that needs to be looked at. And then some of the language, it starts off great and then it goes back into more of a military, like here we are. One is deter, the law, SROs are for the visi- physical, physical, is for the visible presence of, to deter crime. And that could be changed and stated for the visible presence of safety.
Safety, yes.
That's what we're talking about, safety. But it says for the visi- visible presence to deter, to deter, to deter crime. And you can just hear the handcuffs right then for me. And also the questioning of students without anyone present. I mean, even for a person, a law enforcement or administrator themselves, you want to have someone else in there. I would not do that alone because it could be said that some, something was done. And that could ruin your reputation and also your, your profession. So, but I think that needs to be looked at. And, and I'll send some language regarding some of the other things that I see. And I was glad to see that we're talking about the interventions and the preventions. And I thought then there needs to be a segment right there about the awareness of the students and their mental health or their disability. But that does come along at the end, but that needs to be moved to go with those, the intervention, prevention, and then the awareness of information about the student before you do any type of enforcement. But I have a lot, but we, we don't have time.
What I would suggest, because I can see what's happening and let's just backpedal a little bit. Let's go to Susan Morris and then we'll work to Bob. And if any board member, just go around, if you have something that you want to say, and then we'll get to you too and everybody and in that way. I don't have to do it that way. Go ahead, Susan.
A lot of this is redundant because you've combined, you've given us the information from ours, the model. And so a lot of this language will be eliminated.
Yes.
Because it's, it's, if you read it, it sounds like you're reading the same thing several times. And it's just, it's got, you, you shared that it needs to be condensed. This was just to give us the information.
Yes.
And I worked with the School Resource Officer for maybe eight years at Glass. And when we always try to contact a parent or a guardian to get there. But when the parent or guardian could not get there, the administrator becomes the parent in place of the parent. They're there for the, for the student. So I think that's part of what we do as, as administrators.
It's policy KN AJ and it's under interviewing students by police officials. And so the expectation is that if the SRO or policeman needed to interview a student, the administrator makes our reasonable efforts to contact the parent first. And if not, then the parent will serve in loco of that parent and sit in on that investigation. So at no time that student would be investigated without someone present for him or her. In regards to the student, that student can request that their parent be there and not say anything else. They can request for an attorney and they can just stop talking altogether. And that administrator would need to call for that parent or that guardian or the other emergency contact person to pick the child up. And then that administrator and that SRO or police officer will work with that parent in terms of investigating or following up after that.
And that part about student rights that you just said is what we, we put that in here, that, we were blending that in.
And I just hope students are aware of their rights. That they need to be aware that they do not have to talk and in a lot of cases, you're best not saying anything. And so then they have to leave, is that correct?
They get picked up. And again, it depends on what the interview or the questioning is regarding with that.
Dr. Brenner?
So I know that we're pushing our time, but I think this is an important topic for the community and for us to discuss. So thank you for letting us do it, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Edwards. Just a couple of quick comments. One is that we've gotten a lot of information from the administration, which is very helpful. We've gotten a lot of emails, including we have one from Grayson Arnold, our student representative, who pointed out, talking about it, maybe a switch semester, maybe have a, a, a SRO at one school for a semester then switch. So we're going to add that to the list of emails that have been obtained. I just want to point out a couple of things. One is that the information, the wording from this, that's added to this document, a lot of this comes from a document that's called the Virginia School Enforcement Partnership Guide from 2017, which was put together by the Department of Education in conjunction with representatives of different schools, VSA, the, the State Police Department. And, and I think the point is trying to do exactly what we're trying to do, is really make this relationship be more of a community policing emphasis rather than a discipline emphasis. And then we know that the reason that we're concerned, which Dr. Edger pointed out, the reason we're looking at this MOU is because of the current environment where there are certain police departments that have had difficulty with racial disparity. Fortunately in Lynchburg, that's not been a problem dating back to 2008. We had our dialogue in race and racism, we started dealing with this. But we still have problems with systemic racism in a lot of different areas, including the area of medicine, where unfortunately there continues to be discrepancies in mortality rates in the COVID epidemic in other ways, which we're dealing with and other parts of society are dealing with. So, but I think that the, this proposal is good. I'm in fairly close of doing, of having the SRO, the MOU as it stands, as it's been modified. I would emphasize a couple of things. One is that I think that the preamble, which the public is not able to see yet, but I'm sure we'll be able to see, that it is, states that Lynchburg City Schools and the City of Lynchburg Police Department hereby enter into a partnership under this MOU to foster relations of mutual respect and understanding in order to build a positive and safe school environment. The parties agree, the vast in order to build a positive and safe school environment. The parties agree, the vast majority of student misconduct can be best addressed through classroom and in-school strategies. And that really, I think, is the whole message, the remainder of it also. The other concerns I have are the training of SROs, which has been addressed, and I appreciate that being done. Along with Ms. Evans' comments, I agree with her. And I would ask the administration to consider whether it should be an annual review of SRO activities. And maybe that should be done by a committee that's made up of administrators, principals, and maybe community members also to look at that and make sure that that's a fair sum. But I'm certainly in favor of this MOU and I appreciate the change in tone that's been made by the administration.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Well said. Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, no, I support continuing the relationship with OPD. And I do like the addition of the preamble. It's in the, I guess, the model, model policy. I think it sets a nice tone. And, you know, the challenge, I think, is just try to maintain that tone throughout the whole document and, you know, emphasizing that building administrators are the first responders. They're in charge of discipline. And, you know, unfortunately, there are times when SROs need to act as, as police officers. And we just need to be clear, that's limited in exceptional circumstances. So.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. Dr. Senha?
I have no further comment.
Dr. Gupta?
I think SROs play an important role in our schools, especially from external threats. We never had a school shooting, but God forbid if we had one, like in Miami case, SRO was the first responder there. So they are out there to protect our kids. They are the first line of defense against any external threat, any trespassings. And what I see is Lynchburg is a different town. If you look at our police chief, who's currently the chief, has zero tolerance for racism. Any, he's absolutely no nonsense attitude about any kind of racism. So if we find anything, we should talk to him and report to him. Because I watched his swearing and ceremony of new police officers. And the key takeaway, he said, one takeaway is be kind. And that has stuck in my mind. That's a police chief. He's telling his troops to be be kind to the citizens of Lynchburg. And that's the attitude I hopefully they'll bring to the, the schools when they come.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
I too will also be, would support the memorandum of understanding for SROs. I think it's been an exceptional program. I'm sure everything can, can improve. And I think we've talked about the points that are a concern of the school board. I also want to thank Dr. Edwards and the administration for all their hard work in this and also the police department. Some exceptional folks, not only just our SROs, but folks within their administration, the police chief, that, that there has been this partnership, which is a positive thing. And I'm excited that we can continue that partnership. And I hope that our students and our community will also see the opportunities for that partnership. Because when we have partnership, we have communication. When we have communication, we have sharing of ideas and understanding of one another. So I think that's, that's an important piece.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. We want to say thank you, Dr. Edwards, and to your team, Director Brown, that have demonstrated an open door policy to meet with the community around this very important issue. And so we're thankful for that. And I feel very confident, I'm sure the board does, that Lynchburg is not a venue where the school to prison pipeline is being promoted. And we have confidence in the administration to carry this out with all of the concerns that have been presented tonight and will continue to be presented. So thank you very much. I'm very appreciative of this. And Dr. Edwards, you'll let us know how you're proceeding with this going forward with the MOU.
So just immediate next steps so I can manage expectations of all involved. So we've already started the, the merging process and the, the elimination of the duplication. I think what Dr. Carter said, it does need to go through sort of a tone review. Like we have all the information in here, but we do want to make sure that that language has a positive tone to it. So taking all the feedback that we received, all the emails that we have, putting it together, Director Brown and I will put this back together and then we will have it back out to you all so that you can see what the revised language is and give the public another shot to look at it before the chief and I sign it in December. So we still have some time.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Thank you for the process. And thank you for the ultimate goal of safe schools and productive students. All right. Thank you so much. That now brings us to item F for informational items, the next finance committee meeting. Mr. Harvey, is that so?
That's correct, yes.
All right. Tuesday, November the 24th. Very good. All right. I had a turkey on my mind. Okay, two, the school board next meeting will be December the 1st. And we will govern ourselves accordingly with those stated meetings. Under G1, additional items and comments for our next board meeting. We certainly want to hear from Chair Evans. It was a sensational, and I repeat, sensational opportunity to engage with our appropriating body and officials at the state level and even federal level. And we'll be able to hear a report out of that as well as all of the other committees that we may have heard ordinarily tonight going forward. And we're thankful to each of you for your fine work. I would like to underscore our delegate, the Virginia School Board Association is in session. I'm high today because I've dealt with these student reps from around the country, the Commonwealth today. That's just exciting, I'll tell you about it. But far more exciting than that was in yesterday's delegate assembly. Our delegate, Sharon Carter, was masterful as she defended our proposal number four before the delegate assembly. And 76% of the delegates voting, voted in favor of our proposal regarding the volunteer policy reflective of the hard work of Dr. Edwards, the staff, and this entire board. Can we give Delegate Carter a good one? All of them. All right. Having said that, that will now move us to H1. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second, we adjourn. No unreadiness. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. We adjourn. All right. We will take one minute or so to stretch a little bit and we will prepare to move into our public hearing. And we're going to ask that we would prepare ourselves for at least the informational part of the public hearing.
I don't really know what that means.
We'll see if we have any persons who are here to prepare. In our efforts to be engaging of the community and transparent, the developing of our FY2 2021-22 school operating budget, that tonight we are having a public hearing to that effect. And we would like to call this public hearing for the purposes of the FY2021-22 school operating budget to order. And we will now move into B1, which will be the agenda approval in which we will be entertaining public comments tonight and discussions around that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the public hearing?
Move to approve?
Moved by Dr. Nillis, seconded by Ms. Morrison. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries. And the Lynchburg City School Board now will receive public comments regarding the school operating budget for 2021-22. Persons desiring to address the school board shall submit an advance request in writing to the superintendent no later than 12 noon of the Wednesday preceding the regular board meeting or by signing the public comment form, which shall be available to the public 15 minutes before the meeting alerts. Each person requesting to speak shall identify the subject he or she wants to address. And if he or she represents a group, he or she must identify the group. Due to limited seating, members of the public are encouraged to sign up in advance to speak during the public comments. Individuals may be asked to wait outside in the lobby until it is their time to speak and return to the lobby after speaking. All individuals are strongly encouraged and per Governor Northam now must practice social distancing and wear face covering over the mouth and nose. So we want to indicate that now. All right. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or justice, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behaviors that disrupt the meeting or intimidate others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. All right. Having said that, and the time so stated, we will now indicate that we have one person who has signed up for comments tonight in the person of Mr. Robert Flood. And he is representing Virginia Organizing. And he wants to talk about the budget as relates to SROs and other related matters. Mr. Flood?
Yes, sir. How you doing today? How y'all, young ladies and gentlemen, doing?
We're great. Good boy.
Uh, I just wanted to just, got some suggestions as I had the last time I talked. Here's a list of changes that could improve the memorandum of understanding of school resources. And just a few things that I was thinking about and we had talked about with Virginia Organizers was make sure to clear the discipline should be done in school. I hope y'all understand me because I got this, done in school, not the juvenile courts. Basically what they saying, to handle the problems in school, not referring them to detention home. Need to have details of training of SROs to be included in the MOUs. Process of questioning students need to include more details. Need the details others to support. The families, I think the mothers and fathers need to sit in each month when they are getting father's discipline. Still to just recommend them to go to detention home for whatever action. But on top of that, I was talking to someone as well about, I don't know if some of y'all remember TRO, when they used to have a TRO guys? Students were a TRO, TROEs. And I know we don't do that no more. And I know it's kind of outlaw. But it's just a suggestion, if we could maybe think about that, some outstanding students as well-known, and most of them, you know, some of them sports, some academic, you know, people know them, recognize them and, and respect them. Why can't they be a part of the SROs when they walking in the hall, at least having a conversation with the situation? Other than volunteers, you don't have to be a returning citizen, excuse me, a returning citizen to be a volunteer with a SOR. You can just be a volunteer. And I think that, you know, to keep these young people from going to the detention home, I worked there six years. And a lot of kids today got more mentally situated than they had got physical. And if you can't communicate with them or have some kind of bond with young people, I don't care where they come from, you're not going to get no respect. And one thing I learned when I was working at detention home, all the young people that came over there for little minor stuff, could have been handled at the school or they didn't have to come, you know, unless it was some kind of barrel crime, they could handle it, you know, wouldn't have to send them to detention home. Just some suggestions, how can we come together to help the SROs, I mean, SROs? Because I know all is trying to work together to save these kids because we love these kids. And the only way we can do that to work together, might not look like you, you might not look like me, but I think all has got the same goal to save a lot of these young people that maybe can be successful in life. Because I was one of them. I went through that. I didn't have that father. My mother worked all the time, never seen me play ball, but twice in her whole life because she worked all the time. Now it's worse. Because kids out there doing the same thing that parents doing. And they can't talk to, they got nobody to talk to. So you know where they don't end up at. Especially when they go to school, they just looking for somebody to grab a hold to, just to talk about what happened at home. And when you realize that, you know, some of these kids just need just a little helping hand, that's why I think volunteers, not, like I said, not only returning citizens, anybody. If you can volunteer for an hour or two and to help the SROs diffuse a situation, I still will end up sending them to somewhere like detention home. I think it'd be a plus. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flood, for coming tonight and for sharing with us your thoughts. And our school board has embraced legislative positions that are sensitive to the thoughts that you shared tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's time.
All right. Barbara, to my knowledge, I see one name on the list. Do we have any emails or phone calls? Want to ask now that Dr. Edwards would kind of brief us on the procedures for the upcoming budget process and community involvement in that.
Absolutely. So for those members who are watching, the purpose of tonight is really to get input before the budget is completely constructed. And then we'll have another opportunity in the spring for feedback.
And then we'll have another opportunity in the spring for feedback after the budget is constructed. So if you didn't have an opportunity to come tonight, you can certainly, um, email me or email us to let us know your thoughts. I did get one email, which I'll just share the essence with the board, and it was regarding, um, instructional assistance and for us to take a look at the pay for instructional assistance. I don't know if the board received that, but I did receive that prior to the meeting tonight. And then again, just going back to our, um, some of our budget proposal that was in last year's budget proposal, and, and following up from our conversation about the need for additional elementary school counselors, um, we had talked about social worker, um, and, and some behavioral coaches. Um, we recognize that we need support for our pre-K program. So those are some of the things, big picture ideas, that we're using right now to develop the budget. And we are almost, um, finished with our meetings with building principals and their staff to get budget input. We spend this month of November actually collecting all of that information. And then in December, we put together what the numbers would look like, and we start to have the conversations about what is the total budget? Do we have to make some priority decisions as to whether or not to trim, add, include, reduce things in the budget? Um, and then somewhere between, um, mid-January to the end of January, um, through the board discussions as well, we would submit our final budget request to the city manager. So for the public's version, we really want, um, that input, um, on the front end. We used to just do budget input at one point, but now we want them on two ends of that.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, board. We are familiar with the process that we are dealing with, what we've already done, what's coming forward. And so having heard from the public that wanted to present and our superintendent, that would bring closure to our public hearing. And, uh, I'm proud of this because it's longer than some of the ones we've had in the past recently. Very good. All right.
I watch you all.
All right. We would now, uh, like to entertain D1, which would be a notice to the Lynchburg City School Board of a closed meeting. Uh, and pursuant of the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3711A1, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matter, the superintendent's contract. Is there a motion to go into a closed meeting?
I'm going to go into closed meeting.
I would second that. Moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And we will now take a moment, uh, for persons to, um, clear the room, and then we will secure the room.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, yes.